Today is Monday, February 27. The time now is 9:13. In compliance with the open government law, the notices for this public hearing were posted on the Guam Daily Post and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, February 20th and on February 24th. Again, today is Monday, February 27, and the time now is 9:13. The item we will be discussing today is Bill Number 24-37-COR, Committee on Rules by Request of Amaga Haga Guam, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, an act to appropriate $16 million to the Department of Administration for implementation of the adjusted general pay plan. Fiscal note for Bill 24-37-COR was requested on February 1st. It will receive and disseminate to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on February 3rd. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 24-37 are invited to the panel, and we have three listening, and everybody's in support. Great. We will, uh... The general rules for this public hearing are as follows. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies may be read, and hereby a lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes, hopefully within five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you're done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for these proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure the microphone is on, that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning. I'll begin with my vice chair, Senator Telo Tidigui, and we have Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Jesse Luan, Senator Chris Drenius, Senator, um...
Fisher.
Tom Fisher? Senator Joanne Brown. I have to remember, he's not my attorney, he's just a fellow colleague.
This is buddy.
We will now accept testimonies from the following. We will begin with the Chief Justice, sir, and then we'll proceed with... As we'll just take it, go to the left, we have Lillian, then we go to Edburn, and we just take turns, all right? Chief, sir.
Good morning, half a day, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, and senators of the 37th Guam Legislature. Thank you for allowing me to testify initially. I've got appellate session starting at 10:00 a.m., and so I've got to leave pretty promptly. But I will offer that our administrator of the courts, our comptroller, and our director of policy and planning will remain to answer any additional questions that the senators may have of the judiciary. On behalf of the judiciary, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 2437, which is an act to appropriate $16 million to the Department of Administration for implementation of the adjusted general pay plan. As you know, the judiciary's purpose is to administer justice by interpreting and upholding the laws, resolving disputes in a timely matter, and providing accessible and effective services. Carrying out this mission is a dedicated assembly of court employees, over half of whom fall under the pay structures based on the general pay plan. As an independent and co-equal branch of government, we come before you today to seek parity and inclusion for those men and women. Title 4, 6301 mandates that our employee compensation be based on internal equity and external competitiveness. While we have the legal authority to adjust the pay scales of our employees, the ability to implement those adjustments is subject to the availability of funds. For example, after the governor raised the base pay of law enforcement officers by 18% last year, our judicial council only approved a 7% increase for our probation officers and marshals, and a 6% increase for the non-law enforcement court employees to ensure internal equity. Both adjustments were contingent on the additional appropriations, which we requested in our judiciary's fiscal year 2023 budget and the legislature graciously provided. While these increases were meaningful steps, they're not enough to keep up with the rising inflation, ongoing competition with federal salaries, and now the potential loss of employees to executive line agencies following the implementation of an updated GPP. To prevent the further loss of our court employees, we have reviewed the cost of applying the Department of Administration's recommendations. The estimated impact of paying salary adjustments to judiciary employees is a little over $1 million, $1,492.63 to be exact, and that represents an approximate 15%, not a 22% adjustment, the full 22 that's sought for by DOA in the GPP plan, because these employees already received a 6% increase last year for this fiscal year. Absent the additional appropriation, the judiciary will not be able to mirror the Department of Administration's recommended adjustments to our personnel, prompting a likely exodus of very valued employees. These include our Client Services Division, who provide therapeutic, psychological, and educational support for undeserved families, underserved families in Guam, our social workers at the Office of the Public Guardian, who protect the interests of our vulnerable adult population, our clerks, who ensure that court proceedings run smoothly, cases are processed correctly, and that filings are current, accurate, and accessible to all the parties. If we lose these individuals, our productivity will be deeply impacted. We will also have a loss of institutional knowledge, and ultimately, the administration of justice will suffer. Senators, I know that you all want, we all want, a legal system that creates a safer community, but to uphold the rule of law, we have to strengthen the court's backbone. We must recognize the danger to each of us if the rights aren't protected for all of us. I also serve as chairman of the Public Defender Services Corporation Board of Trustees, and I, as the chairman, I will also advocate for the inclusion of PDSC's workforce based on the GPP plan, which will be discussed further in Executive Director Steve Hattori's testimony. Any impact on the representation of indigent defendants will have devastating consequences if it's neglected. In closing, I ask respectfully of our sister branch to support parity for the judiciary's employees by appropriating the funding to implement these adjustments. This will minimize the attrition of critical employees and ensure that they're able to do and provide for themselves and their families. In doing so, we're going to be investing not only in the future of this branch, but in the public that we mutually serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Justice. Ms. Lillian?
Thank you, Senator San Agustin, and thank you, all senators here and who are members of this Committee of Appropriations, and all senators of the 37th Guam Legislature. Thank you again for giving us this opportunity to hear our thoughts, our insights, particularly from the perspective of the Guam's only public hospital. I am Lillian Perez Pasadas, I am the hospital administrator, and in order to run our public hospital, I apologize, I don't have a written testimony, but I will provide one. In order to continue the operations of the hospital, not only do we employ clinical professionals such as doctors, nurses, respiratory therapists, pharmacists, we also employ non-clinical, non-medical staff, because that's what it takes to really fully operate this hospital. And in the non-clinical, non-medical side of the house, we lose employees such as accountants, housekeepers, billers, coders. We also lose employees who are in the medical records division, patient registrations, housekeeping, in the information technology. We lose technicians such as emergency room technicians, who are not under the nurse pay plan. We lose also OP techs, operating room technicians, medical equipment technicians. These are all critical and essential employees that really help the hospital keep it running for them, us to provide excellent care in a safe working environment. And so, I ask and I urge the, this Committee of Rules Law Committee and all the senators to support this passage of the $16 million appropriation for those employees who are in the general pay plan. I also want to emphasize that, you know, although we do have clinicians and nurses without the support staff, such as those who are in the general pay plan, they really help the nursing and the professionals in terms of, we've seen it in COVID, that many of these patients come in with multiple comorbidities, not just in the health or medical issues, but also in the psychological, psychosocial issues that these patients come into the hospital. And so, we use these non-clinical, non-medical employees to then help us become patient senators at the bedside. And so, again, senators, I ask that you support the passage of the $16 million appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pasadas. We will have now, based on the list here, we have, the folks here, I'm going to save you just one more down before we get to you, Ed, and Sean. Yeah, the Chief Justice, you can leave, sir, because I know you have another meeting. And you have your staff here.
And if anyone has any questions of the judiciary staff, our administrator, our comptroller, and our director of policy and planning will remain behind to answer any questions, and thank you for your indulgence, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And if we can have that administrator, please have a seat up here, so in case we have any question, just the one administrator, so... And then we'll begin with you, Mr. George, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
How about any, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, senators and members of this committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony regarding the governor's request for appropriations to implement the Governor of Guam's new salary schedules pursuant to the study previously conducted by the government's consultants. The new salary schedules should have been implemented years ago, but could never be because of the financial condition of the government of Guam. This has always been an issue which has spanned every administration since I began my career in government in 1978. I believe that the desire has always been there, but the means have not. In fact, on several occasions, I did compliment Governor Leon Groh and Lieutenant Governor Justin Oris on their fiscal policies, which allowed for the timely payment of income tax refunds and reallocated government expenditures to reduce the deficit, the direct financial burden to the general fund. However, what I consider a major success is obtaining the approval of the Trump administration to agree for the federal government to cover the payment of the earned income tax credit, EITC, which for so many years has fallen to the general fund to pay. This alone has guaranteed EITC payments to our most vulnerable families, who are most deserving of financial relief. I do believe, though, that the lieutenant governor, Lieutenant Leon Groh, Lieutenant Oris administration's fiscal policies, which targeted elimination of the general fund deficit, is perhaps the proof that this government can responsibly manage its finances to eliminate and prevent falling over steep deficit cliff. Subsequent future administrations now have a successful financial plan to adhere to. Mr. Chairman, I have seen the arbitrage of a general fund deficit prevent an administration providing, from providing needed and critical government services to our people and from fulfilling every campaign pledge and vision. I would like to speak now to the need to pay our government employees what they deserve and are entitled to. The negative consequences of not doing so will consistently manifest itself in the morale of our employees and the failure of the government of Guam to retain our knowledgeable and valuable career for big servants. We continue to see the loss of Gov-Guam professional staff to other organizations, including the federal government and the private sector. In the past, appropriately compensating our government employees caused severe morale problems and conflicts, and has even led to a general strike against the administration, which then further decimated our professional staff, mostly teachers. Having experienced that event resulted in my firm belief that we should never again experience that kind of conflict. I do want, however, to end my testimony on a positive, hopeful note. In the last four years, I have seen firsthand the decisions and initiatives of Governor Lou, Lieutenant Governor Josh, that make me believe that our best days are still to come. We have never stood on the precipice of so much change for the better than today. When was the last time we spoke of finally providing our people with a first-class health care and facility that they deserve and are entitled to? When were we able to diagnose and identify viruses immediately, rather than waiting weeks or months to identify and then treat? To see Guam as truly being at the forefront of providing this first-class care to all our brothers and sisters in Maricone, Asia will no longer be a dream. We can all be assured that future generations will have their own aspirations fulfilled. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Now, you know what? I only have one left, and I know Ed's not in a rush yet. Ma'am, if you can go ahead, and then I'll get Ed next. And I'll finish off this side.
Good morning, senators and everyone present here today and watching. My name is Dr. Mariana Kenyonas Turner, I'm the territorial veterinarian at the Department of Agriculture, and I'm here to show my support for this bill, and thank you to those who have gone before me and spoke so eloquently on the topic. I will make this brief, and perhaps not quite as eloquent, but I'm here to support. I just wanted to express to you, the senators that are here today, that every day at the Department of Agriculture, I work alongside really hard-working, passionate, dedicated people that are devoting their lives to the resources of this island, the water, the soil, the animals, agriculture in general, and they are very deserving of a pay increase. They oftentimes dedicate their time outside of regular hours to do outreach and get out to the community and get them the services that they need. Kind of on a personal level, I do realize that as a hired professional in my field, that my salary is perhaps higher than a lot of my colleagues that I work with on a daily basis. However, even that being said, I did take a pay decrease to be able to take this job because I believe in the mission of better, creating a better animal welfare on Guam, and such is kind of the, how everyone feels within the Department of Agriculture, that we're there because we want to provide this service, and we're not taking these positions because of the pay. My family struggles on their own, even with the resources that I have, and I can only imagine what my colleagues that I work with every day are dealing with, and they're very deserving of, of at least a little bit of relief to be able to provide more for their families. The pay increase would demonstrate the senators' and legislature's appreciation for the dedication of our staff members and allow for better retention of quality employees. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ed, sir, begin with you now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and senators. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Bill 2437, for which, you can see, I am highly enthusiastic. I am not Cicero, but I can learn from him. That is why I have titled this testimony "Pro Populo," for people. In the February 8th press release, which was issued by the governor and lieutenant governor, I was quoted, "We invest in people." That is what this bill proposes, and if you pass it, will bring to fruition a pay increase long postponed due to those who work in the government for the people. This is not a difficult case to make. The facts are clear. Guam Code requires Department of Administration to undertake a triannual review of pay. This review, which began in the administration's first term, has continued in its second. Firstly, we looked at nurses' pay, then law enforcement, and teachers, and now we are presenting a plan which covers most of those who work in government. These, these employees support the nurses, the teachers, and the law enforcement officers. They deserve the same consideration. Now it's their turn. DOA reviewed 203 job positions and compared them with pay of equivalent job holders in Middle America. We did not advocate for pay levels found on the eastern and west coasts, as we know that they are higher because of higher costs and differing economies. We looked at the heartland. Some jobs on Guam earned over 40% less than their fellow workers in the mainland. Understanding that our job was to make a rational proposal to the governor, we presented a pay proposal which is based on a weighted average. The governor accepted this approach. We commend it to you, too. The facts are clear. DOA worked on this study for many hours. It's good work, and I must take this opportunity of commending and thanking the DOA Human Relations Branch, and Shane is here representing them, for the work that they put into the study. It is hardly surprising that Guam pay rates have fallen behind. There's been no pay review since 2014, and that was based on data that was already two years old. That's not equitable. We have to address the brain drain from government. We lose staff to the autonomous agencies, which enjoy the ability to make pay adjustments more frequently, subject only to their boards and, in some cases, PUC review. We lose staff to the federal government. They have been awarded a 4.1% pay increase for 2023, and with the exception of 2011, '12, and '13, have been awarded annual pay increases of over 18% over the same period included in the DOA study, and this does not take into account locality adjustments which increment the overall pay plan. We also lose staff to the private sector, which is free to make whatever adjustment the market demands. This pay increase amounts to only 1.7% per year for those, and the vast majority of our staff are in this category, who have worked for government in each of the 10 years for which no adjustment was made. There is no need to dwell upon what has happened to costs during that period. We cannot and should not penalize those who work for government. I am a qualified accountant and of necessity fiscally conservative. I would not be here in support of this bill if I did not think that the proposed pay increase were not affordable. There are those who say now is not the right time. There is never a right time. There is a time when the fiscal position supports it, and that is now. Revenues are rising, not falling. The administration has collected more than forecast. This bill appropriates a part of that gain to fund this increase for the remainder of fiscal '23. The increase for fiscal '24 has been embedded into the executive budget request for fiscal There is no indication that strong revenues are likely suddenly to fall. Favorable conditions from the Military Build-Up, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funding by federal agencies, and other improved collections indicate that revenues will maintain and probably improve upon their levels. When the Marines have finally been relocated to Guam, we will benefit from higher Section 30 revenues and additional spending in our local economy. Of course, infrastructure improvement and maintenance are important, and funds should be allocated to them. There are many projects, usually referred to as deferred maintenance, which need to be spent urgently. However, no facility once completed can fulfill its purpose if there are not enough staff to run it and provide services. As the governor said, plumbers, electricians, and other skilled labor are the very people who maintain schools and other government facilities, and they are the people that are covered by the general pay plan. Retention of staff is economically advantageous. Stemming turnover and redirecting efforts from recruiting staff, which is a very expensive activity, to training and providing a career for government employees is the best investment. We invest in people. There are 11,000 employees in government service in different agencies, including component units. About 3,500 employees are covered by the estimated annual cost of $42 million, including federally funded employees that are quoted in the, in the study. I wish to point out the not-so-obvious benefits. For example, retirement contributions also increase with the prospect of eliminating the pension deficit earlier than currently expected, a cost-saving for the future. Higher incomes lead to higher taxes, improving revenues in the general fund, both through direct taxation and through tax receipts on the local, on the local spending which cycles through the local economy. I will repeat, our employees are our greatest asset. We cannot provide the services which the people need without them. Some senators have expressed concerns about the inability of those agencies of which they have oversight to recruit and retain personnel. It is those in these agencies who are covered by the general pay plan who manage recruitment, pay, procurement, and providing every kind of support so that their frontliners can do their job. General pay plan employees pay the bill, issue the assessments, manage their budgets, ensure that facilities are clean and maintained, that we comply with legal mandates, and keep government functioning. They should not be forgotten. The general pay plan fixes that. This bill simply appropriates funds which the administration has identified to this process. There is nothing exceptional in that. That is the way the appropriation process is supposed to work. Again, senators, I ask you, the governor Again, senators, I ask you, the governor and lieutenant governor ask you to invest in our employees. That investment will give you the best return. I would like to thank my fellow cabinet members who are here today to support this bill. I would like to thank our employees who provide services to the people of Guam. I would particularly like to thank the staff of the Department of Administration who worked on this study and who support the work of so many agencies so that the people can be served. Lastly, I would like to thank you, senators, for allowing me the opportunity to speak in support of Bill twenty-four, twenty-four thirty-seven. Please, invest in people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Shane, you may, you may speak now. You have testimony, and then you'll be followed by Mr. Baltista, who's basically representing BBMR, all right, for Mr. Carlson.
Good morning, Chairman and fellow senators. I'm Shane Nauta from Department of Administration, Human Resources. The director has, um, given the testimony for DOA, but I would just like to add on top of it, um, it is a daily challenge for our department, um, within line agencies to try and support the needs of every agency that we serve. Um, and, and yes, over time, pay does tend to deteriorate if we don't move it, and I believe what we're seeing in front of us today is, um, a lot of departments, um, coming through the pandemic, uh, did lose a lot of people, and, um, it's, it is getting harder and harder to retain who we are able to recruit. This plan will go a long way, um, our office included. This plan will go a long way to, um, help that situation, um, as much as possible. That's all. And, um, sorry, I'd be remiss. I'd like to thank my team, uh, who put a lot of work into this, uh, at the same time that we worked on every other pay plan. This team put together a proposal that I think, um, is very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. I think it's, we, um, we're determined, I acknowledge that your office, specifically in DOA, is the, is the group that does the study for pay, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, we acknowledge that. Mr. Baltista.
Sir. Hafade, bunes dias, todo sahamsu. My name is Tyler Baltista, currently a Budget and Management Analyst with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. I would like to thank Senator Joseph Augustine and all members present of Imena Trenta Shet, the Illes, Illes, Les, Le, Les, Tora, and Guam, for allowing me to read into the record the written testimony of Mr. Lester Carlson, Jr., the Director of BBMR. The Bureau of Budget and Management Research, to refer to as Bureau, presents this testimony in full support of Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-seven COR, an act to appropriate sixteen million dollars from the general fund to the Department of Administration for the implementation of the updated general pay plan, GPP. The updated GPP is reflective of the comprehensive compensation review that took months of diligent work by the executive branch's personnel experts, and will provide for a twenty-two percent increase, as recommended by the Director of Administration on January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and approved by the Governor of Guam on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The proposed legislation intends to begin the implementation of the updated GPP on April first, two thousand and twenty-three. As the Governor of Guam stated in the budget message for the recently transmitted fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four executive budget request, the proposal incorporated adjustments to the GPP in line with Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-seven COR. The FY two thousand and twenty-four revenue projections are supported by the data transparently reported by the Bureau via the monthly consolidated revenue and expenditure report and special revenue funds tracking report. These reports clearly demonstrate Guam's resiliency and recovery from COVID-nineteen. As for FY two thousand and twenty-three, we continue to see a steady growth in revenues. The general fund has collected twenty-nine million dollars over adopted levels for the first three months of FY two thousand and twenty-three. Collections for the month of January continue to reflect this upward trend with approximately thirteen million dollars collected over the adopted level for the month. This translates to approximately forty-two million dollars of actual revenues collected over the adopted levels for the first four months of FY two thousand and twenty-three. Certain special funds, notably the tourist attraction fund, are also continuing to exceed monthly projections with the gradual return of tourism to Guam. As you would know, tourism on Guam has a multiplier effect on other forms of revenues in addition to the tourist attraction fund. The GPP has not been updated since its implementation in two thousand and fourteen, and the hard-working employees covered by the GPP have already waited too long to receive these well-deserved and long overdue pay adjustments commensurate with the level of commitment and sacrifice they provide for public service. While teachers, public safety, and law enforcement personnel, and nurses receive their well-deserved compensation, those working alongside them and supporting the work did not. Morale and retention efforts must be addressed through these measures to ensure we keep the institutional knowledge within the government of Guam. To reiterate, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research is in full support of Bill twenty-four, Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-seven COR. Senzeramente, Lester Carlson, Jr., signed and dated February third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Baltista. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to ask that Mr. Ed, Mr. Baltista, and a few of you, please stay back, but I want to be able to get as many testimonies as possible. There's about thirty people here to testify, and I want to be able to get them through. So if you could, please, don't leave, just be excused to be outside, and then we'll bring you back in when the questions are going to start. All right? Okay? Thank you.
I think it'd be more effective to just ask panel by panel. I know a lot of them probably have things to do as well.
Yeah. Mr., Mr. Chair, um, may I please make a recommendation, considering this is just fresh, the testimony is just fresh, it gives us the opportunity to ask some questions before the next panel comes up? I think, uh, it, it would be very helpful for us senators, uh, with the list of questions to ask. I appreciate if we can reconsider in just, uh, maintaining Mr. Burns here. If we could just ask for Mr. Burns.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll allow the questions, but we're going to reduce it to two questions per senator, because there's many to testify, okay? Key is, colleagues, I'd like to also recognize Senator Bloss has also joined us this morning. We'll begin with the vice chair. Every, every one of the senators will have two questions, and then we'll move on, but I'm going to ask Mr. Byrne to, please don't leave, and Baltista, even after you're done, because there may be quite a few more questions for the two of you, more than two. All right? Senator, uh, Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for indulging us, uh, at least a couple of questions that we have on the top of our head before we get, uh, inundated with, uh, a lot of testimony. Um, first, I want to thank you all of this panel for being here today and testifying. I mean, we all agree that with the price, cost of goods going up, that, you know, making a living is very difficult on this island, you know, and those who serve the people of Guam, government employees or services of the people, or public servants, all of us who sit in this position. So I, I greatly appreciate, and especially the hard work that Shane, your office, has done. I know you've worked in, into this, uh, particular line of, um, assessing, uh, pay raises, so I appreciate all the work that your office is doing. However, um, you know, when I, I saw this bill, Mr. Chair, I was anticipating that attached to this bill should be a copy of exactly what we're increasing. Um, I know that there was the, the play, uh, pay plan was submitted, uh, to the governor, you know, to review, but as a legislature, shouldn't we have an attachment to this bill indicating, and why was that not attached? Would you happen to know that? I know the governor is the one that submitted, but it was with, uh, your concurrence. Mr. Byrne?
Yes, thank you, Senator. Uh, I submitted a copy of the general pay plan to the Speaker, uh, and I see it on the website.
But you didn't feel that it was necessary to submit the pay plan to the bill as an attachment, like attachment A, so that we can see exactly who's getting these raises? And, you know, because there's questions about, uh, this include the teachers. Teachers got raises last, uh, I think, last year or the year before? Just last year, they got raises. Does this incorporate them? Does this incorporate the pay, uh, increase from the base pay or from what they actually have right now, concurrent, what they're concurrently getting? Or is it from the base pay? I mean, things like that are important when you're attaching. I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, um, during the last pay increase, there was an attachment to the pay raise, um, that was given with a bill. So, what, do you believe that this should happen too as well?
Well, obviously, I have no objection to attaching something that we've already submitted to the legislature, but I would like to point out, um, and I'll, I'll ask Shane to comment on the second part of your question, but I would like to point out that the, the teacher's pay increase was a legislative requirement, and therefore, the, um, the plan had to be attached to, to the bill. This is simply, um, as I suggested in my testimony, this is simply an appropriation. But I'm happy to, uh, to include the general pay plan, uh, with the bill if, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
And, um, I'll ask Shane, the, the point you asked about teachers and, um, who it covers, I'll ask Shane to comment on.
Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Shane, and, and does this include the base pay? Yeah. Well, I just, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, um, it does not include the teachers, but, uh, it is an adjustment to the scale that does govern all the base pay for all the positions, uh, included in the general pay plan. So, yes, it's an adjustment to the base pay.
Base?
Yes.
Not current?
Uh, well, base pay, I guess we're looking at, uh, the scale is the base pay, uh, for any respective employee in their current step, so it will be an adjustment to their current salary, their current base pay.
The current base pay?
Yes.
Not the starting?
No. Uh, well, the, the scale itself is updated, so it'll cover both starting and what they're earning now, currently.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, but I, I think it should be attached, Mr. Chair, that's something we can think about, you know, so that we're clear on what, what's increasing. So my second question, uh, Mr. Byrne, because Bill twenty-four doesn't, uh, it does not amend Public Law thirty-six one oh seven, which is the FY twenty-three Budget Act, increasing the general fund revenues and appropriating the additional resources specifically for the adjustment, uh, general pay plan, what appropriations in the Public Law thirty-six dash one oh seven does adalute plan to reduce or eliminate in the amount of sixteen million in order to pay for the proposed pays, playpan, uh, pay plan, uh, adjustment in FY twenty-three?
Thank you, Senator. It doesn't propose to reduce any appropriation. As I explained, this, um, appropriation is an appropriation of additional revenues that have been realized. This is a pattern we followed in many other bills, um, that have recent, well, none have been passed by this legislature, but that were passed in the thirty-sixth legislature. So I, I don't think there's any need to, to put language in there to alter that, but that, of course, is the choice of the legislature.
So the funding is coming from?
We.
The sixteen million is going to come from the, you're looking at excess revenue? Is that what you're?
Additional revenues that we've, that we've, uh, realized and have been disclosed in the CRI.
CRI report is showing how much revenue? Excess revenue?
I think, I think it would be helpful if I referred you to the fiscal note.
Right.
Um, and maybe you, you will allow me to quote from it, right? The proposed legislation intends to appropriate sixteen million dollars to the Department of Administration for the purpose of implementing the general pay plan. DOA submitted a memorandum to the Governor of Guam relative to the recommended update. DOA's estimated annual costs associated with the updated GPP amount, uh, to approximately forty-one million eight hundred thousand, inclusive of employees funded by federal funds, and I can explain more about that later if you wish. Per the December two thousand and twenty-two Consolidated Revenue and Expenditure Report, the general fund has collected approximately twenty-nine million one hundred thousand dollars above adopted levels for the first quarter of fiscal twenty-three. The Bureau estimates the preliminary collection estimates for the month of January twenty-three for the general fund amounts to approximately thirteen million dollars above the adopted level for the month. This translates to an estimated forty-two million dollars in general fund revenues collected over the adopted level through the month of January twentieth, twenty-three.
Okay.
It then goes on to talk about withholdings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. This, this means that actually this pay plan is going to cost the government annually forty-one point eight million dollars, not sixteen, that everyone thinks it is. It's forty-one point eight for a full year of implementing this pay raise, right?
Yes, and this, this bill only appropriates for the remainder of fiscal twenty-three.
For the end of the fiscal year.
And, okay. Their forty-one million includes the federally funded employees that aren't appropriated by the legislature.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions? Two questions.
Mr. Chair, in respect to my fellow colleagues that are here, I'd like to go in order of those that arrived, noting that I think the Republicans are all here and a couple of Democrats, but I defer.
Do you, you can ask questions now.
In fairness to my colleagues that arrived before me, I would extend the opportunity for them to ask questions before I do. Thank you.
Senator Brown, if you have a question, go ahead and ask.
Mr. Chairman, again, in courtesy to my colleagues, as I always do, that have arrived before me, I don't like to change the rules here this morning. If you can allow them to ask questions, and I will wait until they're done, and then I will proceed to do so. Thank you.
All right. Senator Tom, were you here first?
Yes, sir, a couple of questions. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you.
Shane, could I, I, is your last name Ugin? Is that a question? What is it? Oh, okay, sorry, Shane. Nungata, okay. Um, Mr. Nungata, um, I have the two thousand and four budget in front of me, and, and you have stated that the forty-one million is reflected. How can I discover where that forty million, forty-one million dollars is inside the budget?
And is this for the twenty, or the twenty-four budget?
Yes, sir. Because you have, as I understand it, I might be wrong, but I understand that, uh, maybe perhaps it was Mr. Byrne who stated that the forty-one that we anticipate for year two thousand and twenty-four.
Well, yes, Senator, but not the forty-one million, only the locally appropriated, um, amount, because, as I just stated, federally funded employees who will get this increase and are included in the forty-one million are not appropriated through the executive budget.
Okay, so, uh, as two thousand and twenty-five comes around, we could anticipate seeing a greater outlay, uh, for, uh, government pay?
The executive budget request, it did include, um, embedded into it, the increases for fiscal twenty-four for the locally funded employees.
Okay, um, because it's my intent to compare two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-three, and I trust that in some set of the numbers, I will see an increase of forty-one million?
Yes, sir. Not forty-one million, just the local, the local proportion of the forty-one million.
Okay, how much is that?
The, uh, I don't have the numbers for each agency, but generally, about a third of our payroll is federally funded.
Um, could you, uh, I know you don't have the budget in front of you, but, uh, for two thousand and twenty-four, but could you point me in the general direction where I should look to see that amount?
Well, um, the.
Or is it just, is it spread among all the agencies?
The actual amounts are, are in each agency. So if you, if you study the, uh, staffing pattern of each agency.
Okay.
You will see that twenty-two percent has been included. For, for, for these, no, not all the, obviously, not all the employees are covered by this plan. As we explained, some of them already have been granted pay increases.
So cumulatively, in the budget, I will see that amount?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what I was getting at. Let's see, um, well, first of all, the twenty-two percent, I know that there are a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of people employed by the government of Guam who are tuning in, uh, uh, to see this hearing, uh, because they are deeply, deeply interested in whether, whether they're going to get a pay raise, which I respect, and I'll be honest, I haven't come to the conclusion one way or another yet. I mean, this is a lot of money coming out of the public purse, so I appreciate everyone's concerns, and, um, uh, I hope that, uh, I hope that, that people listening also appreciate the concern for our responsibility over the public purse. So I don't, uh, I'm just listening, um, and, uh, one of the things I am very disappointed in is, following up on Senator Brown here, um, near as I can calculate, it looks like fifty percent of the senators didn't show up for this hearing. Fifty percent. These people who are looking for twenty-two percent raise, they show up for work and get paid. Looks like half of us think that we don't have to show up for work and we get paid anyway. It looks like half of us think that we don't have to show up for work and we get paid anyway. So I'll just make that observation. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duñez, do you have any questions? Two questions.
You just want to say, Mr. Chairman, and I do have two questions. One will be for BBMR, as well as Department of Administration, and the other one will be for the Guam Memorial Hospital. Mr. Byrne, have you, this is all in one question, Mr. Chairman. The analysis from the Office of Finance and Budget demonstrates that for the purposes of completing this fiscal year, it's $20.9 million that's required. That is a $4.9 million deficit. And this is why, Mr. Byrne, I will add, that in the last fiscal legislature, in the 36th, we corrected the way we introduce bills for appropriations. We do it as a supplemental appropriation, so that it takes into consideration revenues juxtaposed with expenditures. And during the Committee of the Hall, I will demand that we do that again, because to entertain revenues means we can fund other things in the government, like taking care of the hospital, like taking care of education. But my direct question to BBMR, first of all, is the same question. Do you see this shortfall as been enumerated by?
Senator, I've not, I've not seen the document you're referring to, so it would be very hard for me to comment on it. But I believe that maybe OFB has not taken into account the federally funded employees. But I'd be happily to review their document and comment accordingly.
So, Mr. Portista, in line with that, why is this bill not structured as a supplemental appropriation, taking into consideration expenditures, revenues? And why aren't revenues being raised to accomplish this?
Hi, Senator. Thank you for your question. With all due respect, I am merely just an analyst with the Bureau, so I will defer that question to our management for answers. I will work with Director Carlson on getting your response for that.
Please, thank you. Lilian, thank you for being here today, and for everyone for being here today for this very important discussion and analysis. So my direct question to you is, all of the projects that have been identified necessary at the hospital to keep this hospital going until the new hospital is built, such as the electrical panel, such as the roof, where this legislature has already appropriated $10 million to that hasn't been expended yet, and all of the various capital improvement projects that are required to be done at the Guam Memorial Hospital, are they currently fully funded?
The roof repair, we got funding from, I believe, DOI, and that's, that project is ongoing right now. And we are also changing the air handling units. That's the air conditioning system in the hospital. That project is also ongoing. We are also renovating the SNF, which is the B wing, separating the HVAC system. So we do have quite a bit of projects ongoing that have been supported by federal funds in addition to our operating revenue. So those are ongoing right now.
So my simple request, then, can you provide to the committee the list of projects that was identified under all of the deficiencies that were identified internally at the hospital?
Absolutely. We have that.
So that, and and their funding source? Because we're going to be reapproaching revenues here as part of this discussion. So we will ensure that everything's fully funded alongside providing for our employees.
We have that report ready, sir.
Thank you very much. Those are my two questions for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Jesse Lohan, do you have any, you have two questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Burns, yes. So the, for the rest of the fiscal year, basically, for folks under the general, general pay plan, to be inclusive of employees federally funded, it'll be 20,000, or 21 million, basically?
Approximately, so, yes.
Okay. Now, to the court administrator, if if parity were to, were to happen with this, what what would be the the estimated rest of the fiscal year of parity look like?
For the judiciary employees that are.
Yes.
Good morning, Senators.
Good morning.
I'll announce my name, as I didn't introduce myself earlier. Danielle Rosetti, Administrator of the Courts for the Judiciary of Guam. And as our Chief Justice alluded to in his testimony, we were requesting for a little over 1 million for the remainder of the fiscal year for our employees to be in parity with the general pay plan increases that the the bill proposes. And the number that we provided does not include federally funded employees.
It's not, it's not inclusive?
Does not, is not inclusive. It is, that's locally funded.
Okay, to be, okay, to be inclusive of the federally funded employees, what would that be?
I don't have that exact figure now, but I do know that what we are asking for on the local side would be a little over 1 million.
A little over 1 million? Okay, that's for the rest of the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Okay. And if you, if, for FY24, then, to be inclusive of the other two quarters that it just passed, what would that number be?
Approximately 2.1 million.
2.?
2.1 million.
2.1 million. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have your two questions now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to ask, and maybe to make sure my math is right, because I could never be in charge of the money at the bank. I'd probably mess up the numbers. But I wanted to ask, in who is included? Maybe Mr. Nungata or Mr. Byrne, since you're from Department of Administration. Who would be included? Because I don't have the list in front of me of who would be the recipient of these pay increases. And does it include unclassified? Does it include directors in the government of Guam?
Good morning, Senator. Thank you for your question. The general pay plan, I I think earlier we heard, it includes a good bulk of the positions. You're looking at administrative positions. To quote the hospital CEO, it also includes a lot of the technicians that they use. It includes positions such as engineers, botanists, biologists, archaeologists, social workers, pretty much every position that's not a nurse or a public safety officer or a teacher, which in the respective larger agencies, like the line agencies and the hospital and DOE, constitutes in some places almost half of their workforce. So it is, it is on the budget analyst, sorry, BBMR sitting next to me. So it does, it does include a lot of those positions that keep the background running for a lot of the critical agencies. It does include positions like art positions, you know, any kind of photographer.
Does it include unclassified positions? So does it include directors in the government of Guam?
This, this, no, this is the, this does not include the directors.
Okay, does it include any unclassified positions?
It'll include some unclassified positions that were established and rolled forward from CWA of 2014 and maybe even 2010.
Okay, and do we, do we know what those positions are? Again, I I agree with Senator Telo. It'd be good to have a listing because, I mean, I'd like to know what the amounts are, because someone who's a clerk or maybe someone who's earning $25,000 a year, for example, I mean, there's going to be obvious disparity at the lower level for those that probably are most impacted by the the cost of living increases that we're all experiencing versus someone who's getting, you know, $35,000 or $50,000 or $110,000.
Yes, yes, and that's, that's a, so we, the unclassified positions, for example, a special projects coordinator, which is a position.
There's many of them.
Right, yes, and it was established.
Many special projects coordinators. Is there any competitive hiring for special project coordinators?
Well, because they're unclassed, they're basically appointed. But the other part of that picture, though, is also the limited term employees and the temporary employees.
And they would get a pay raise also?
Yes. They utilize classified titles, but they're hired for the short term.
And are they hired competitively?
No, they're, they're.
No, they're not. They're political appointees. Let me just give an example, if my, if my math is right, because it's been a long time since I've been in school. But let's say we're earning $25,000 a year. Maybe you can calculate on your end with a 22% increase. My annual increase, I'm assuming, would be about $5,500. Would that be right?
That's, that's approximate, yeah.
If I divide that over 12 months, maybe I'd get another $458 a month. Maybe that'll help pay for my gas bill. If I'm earning $35,000, I'd get maybe an annual increase of $7,700, and that would give me about $641. If I may be earning over $100,000, maybe $110,000, that would increase me to $24,200 with a monthly increase of $2,016. If I was earning over $200,000 a year, now there are positions in the government that earn that, I'd be earning an increase of $44,000 a year, an increase of $3,666 a month.
Yes, as an adjustment to the base salary.
So that would be something maybe we need to look at. Maybe the lower end employee should get a higher percentage if we want to look at this issue in all fairness, if we want to talk about cost of living versus the higher end. That would be substantially in the thousands on a monthly basis. That's how much is being increased.
I mean, that's, that's definitely a possibility. When adjusting these scales, there are those types of analysis. When we looked at the positions that were included, of course, we included everything under the general pay plan. We did take a look at the current constitution of the line agencies for those employees that we administer pay for, and did take a look at, when taking a slice out of the classification plan, looking at how many employees were in which positions, right? And overall, the general pay plan, considering how many employees it covers, costs, of course, substantially less than other pay plans, like the law enforcement, because of those lower end positions. But it did impact a lot of lower end positions, more so than it did the mid to higher level ones. Part of that was due to seeing a lot of attrition in those institutional positions, right? Where you have a lot of the senior employees that left us. And so what it did was it, it started the process of people being escalated into higher level positions by need. So, yes, there, there is definitely a general impact, a greater impact for the lower level positions. And predominantly, at least on the line agency side, we do have a lot of LTAs that are in those lower level positions that aid departments like public health and other areas that that push things out. So you're correct, there's definitely an impact, and a large constitution of our workforce has changed over the last three or four years.
One other question, since I'm limited in how many questions I can ask, having been here, having been here this morning. We were discussing about the federal positions. Is the federal government going to cut? Are they going to encumber the crease? Should we do the increase? Are they, who's going to cover the cost of that? Normally, they have a set amount that they might appropriate on an annual basis. So who's going to make up the difference?
Senator, the the federal government will cover these pay increases in their grants. Agencies that have to pay federal employees these high amounts will be required to speak with their grantors to include the additional amounts in their, in their grant budgets. Most of the time, we find that that's an easy fix from the federal government.
And if it's not covered? Because you have different grants and different amounts. Most of these things are, you know, they're not every, they're planned many, many months and years in advance. What if they don't provide additional funding, and that's what the federal money's capped at?
Well, if they don't provide it, then we won't be able to to pay it. I mean, that's, that's true of any federal grant. There's whatever the expense, personnel or otherwise, if the federal government doesn't agree to to fund that, then we can't pay it. But I would, I would add that, should they pay it, and and I'm pretty confident that, as I, as I explained in my own testimony, the federal government has granted increases to its own employees. So I can't see them fighting Guam too much on that matter. But when they do provide the increase, they also have to fund the additional amount that goes into the pension fund, and therefore, the pension fund will benefit from that. And also, you know, they, the, those relevant employees will pay higher taxes on their incomes, and that will help the general fund.
That'll be nice, but that's not consistent, and we don't know how or when each different grant that we have in the government would be approved, do we?
I'm sure everybody's working on that now. I mean, it's, it's highly unusual for a federal grant to overspend. Generally, the problem we have is a federal grants expire in time. So I, although, yes, it's a concern, I don't think it's a really serious practical concern.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'll wait for the next round. Thank you.
Senator Amanda, do you have, do you have your two questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to first thank all of the employees who came out to testify this morning, and of course, the administrators of our different agencies for advocating for, for our, our human resources and all of the good work that our government employees put in to serve our island every day. So to us, Masi, I'd like to ask, just thinking ahead here, are there any other pay plans that DOA is working on now that we can look to, start planning for in the future? Or are we focused here on this general pay plan? We've done the nurses that we were able to include in our budget. We've done the teachers, the law enforcement. We have this general pay plan. Is there anything else that we can expect?
Thank you, Senator. On the front page of the submission to the governor, there are five plans that that the government operates within. This is the third of the, actually, it's the fourth plan of the five. The, the two that we haven't addressed in this particular study are the attorney pay plan and the executive pay plan. And I am sure we will move on to those. However, it it's our job to get this one done and dusted and into the system before we, before we deal with those.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a timeline that we can expect for those once we've get, get this through the door?
I don't think it would take very long to to deal with these, because they're, only cover a few employees. This covers like a large number of employees, and as we said, we, we studied over 200 positions. That wouldn't be necessary for the, for the other two.
Thank you very much. That's my two questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Man. Senator Blas, do you have, do you have your two questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and to the panel, thank you very much for being here today. I guess the first question that I have is probably directed to BBMR and to Director Burns with regard to the 16 points. Let's just work with the $16 million. Did that include also the, obviously, 22% increase in government paycheck? Does that include the corresponding increase in the government contribution to their, to their benefits?
I'm sorry, Senator, the government contribution to?
To employee benefit.
Yes.
It, so it did include that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was answered. Okay. The question was earlier, who was included in this pay plan? I guess my question to the alternate counter to that is, or to the alternative to that, who wasn't included in this pay plan?
Good morning, Senator. Thank you for the question. Who is not included in the pay plan? It'll basically be everyone who falls into the other pay plans, which would be the nurses, public safety, teachers, and also executive and attorneys at this, at this point were not included in this update.
The executives and the who?
And the attorneys, sorry. The attorney pay plan.
Okay. Well, I'm only limited to two questions, so I, there was a third one, but I'll wait. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Senator Roy, can I, thank you for joining us, but do you have two questions?
Good morning. Biba Gov Guam. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. You know, we are definitely looking at you guys' pay raises. I just wanted to ask the chair, or I guess not the chair, but the members down there, who can answer whether or not senators are included on this pay increment?
Thank you, Senator. I can answer. No, senators are not included in this. The, the legislature and the judiciary are separate. That's why the Chief Justice testified separately. And I'm sure you're more than capable of advocating for your own, for your own increase.
Of course, just want to make sure that, you know, the people know that we're not trying to give ourselves pay raises at this time. How about other? How about other elected capacities?
I'm sorry.
Other elected officials?
Other elected officials? No, no.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You're an excuse. I would, all right? Thank you. And I would call the next folks, Mr. Byrne, if you can excuse yourself for now, and then we'll call you in if we need, if there's any additional question to ask you, Ms. Anne and Shane, and, and Mr. Bautista, just relax outside. We'll call you back in. The next folks will be, we have Steve Attori, and if we can try to get everyone to line up accordingly as I call your name, so that that'll be the flow of the, of the testimony, okay? We have Steve Attori, we have Ken Bautista. Ken, where you at? Come on up. You got Steve, go ahead and have a seat there, and then we'll just line everybody up. Then you got Julian Jensen, then John Tyrone, and then Dave De Sola. And then we got Gary House, you're after Dave. We have Therese Areola, ma'am. You're after Gary. Then we have Alice Tyrone, ma'am. And I'm trying to get two more chairs so we can fill this panel. And that'll be Michelle Lastimosa. Michelle, are you here? Is that Michelle? Michelle Lastimosa at the end, please. And then, former Speaker Wambad, ma'am? Judy? Have a seat. We just have, everybody just move down, please. Okay, here we go. We're going to start with you, Steve, and then we're going to proceed down. Speaker Wambad, you're going to be last, okay? Just to give you fair warning. We're going to proceed down the, the panel and we'll move on. Steve, you may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Honorable Jose San Agustin. Good morning, Vice Chair Senator Telotidegui. Good morning, committee members. I apologize in advance, I only emailed my testimony to the committee members, and I see that some members of the Senator Legislature who are not committee members are present, so I'll, I'll forward that to all members. Thank you. I am Stephen Attori, the Executive Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation. March eighteenth, we celebrate the sixtieth anniversary of Gideon versus Wainwright, the U.S. Supreme Court decision that required counsel in all criminal cases where someone is unable to afford an attorney. So that is part of our job. We represent indigents charged with criminal offenses. We do protect the constitutional rights of your constituents. We are testifying today in support of Bill Number Twenty-four Thirty-seven, and we are also asking for an appro-
Steve, if you can just move the mic closer. Appreciate it.
And we are also asking for an appropriation to allow us to afford this increase to our staff. Unfortunately, we're not really within the executive branch, so we were not part of the sixteen million dollars. Pretty sure it was just oversight. They didn't really intend to exclude us. But we need a, a certain of funding to allow our board the authority to basically provide pay parity for our hardworking employees of the Public Defender Service Corporation. But more importantly, the hardworking employees of Gov Guam as well have earned this increase and deserve this increase. This might stem the tide of brain drain that has lowered our sea of employable hires, so to speak. United Airlines was just here, eventually enticing over five hundred residents to relocate to Colorado where they will earn more money and where they will pay income taxes. I can't speak to other agencies, but I can speak for our agency that our employees have worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic and have done their best to ensure that there is no COVID logjam of cases at court. Our career public servants should be given salaries that reward them for their hard work and loyalty. The across-the-board aspect of the pay raise is extraordinarily fair. The last time there was a raise, it was illusory for most of Gov Guam. Teachers, nurses, law enforcement, and new hires received raises upwards of forty percent. The existing general pay plan employees and attorneys got no more than a three-point-eight percent raise. An employee who dedicated years of service went from an N-ten, as an example, with twelve years of experience, down to an N-three, which only required three years of experience as an N. That employee was basically told, you're going to get a raise, but we're going to give you that raise, but reduce, not credit you for all your years of experience, basically removing nine years of experience credit at that time. So I mean, it was like a running joke, right? At the, at the time, I don't know if you guys remember, but like, people would say like, oh, my HR just made me nine years younger because instead of being an N-ten with twelve years of experience, I'm now an N-three with three years of experience. This also affected the attorneys. The attorneys likewise suffered the same situation where attorneys who were like a four-step, six, maybe Mr. Senator Fisher was there at the time, you know, attorney four-step, six is a senior attorney with over fifteen years of experience. And so they were given a three-point-eight percent raise and then lowered down to an attorney four with eleven years' experience of four-step, three or four, I believe. And so, yeah, it was a raise, it was three-point-eight percent, and, and at the time, it, you know, barely really matched the rate of inflation. So this twenty-two percent raise, we totally, wholeheartedly support. We're glad that it's being applied across the board to, to all employees under the general pay plan. I recognize that it does not apply to the attorneys, and, you know, and that's a difficult situation that we're, we're also dealing with. As far as attorneys go, you know, we are the second largest law firm on island. Of course, the Attorney General's Office is the largest, and we have had a history of difficulty in recruitment. We've had an open and continuous recruitment announcement over the past five consecutive years for attorneys one, two, three, and four. We even have one attorney that would make more money as a teacher. We're doing everything we can to keep her as an attorney. Additionally, we at the Public Defender Service Corporation have to compete with the Attorney General's Office for the limited pool of attorneys with one arm tied behind our backs. Hiring attorneys to represent your constituents has been made more difficult because the OAG can pay fifteen percent more for comparable work. Attorneys have to take a fifteen percent pay cut to work for us versus prosecution. Now, the, the cost to implement the twenty-two percent increase for the rest of our staff to include our attorneys who make fifteen percent less than prosecutors is, well, without the attorneys, it's three-hundred-twenty-eight, four-forty-two. If we include our attorneys and all other staff members to apply the twenty-two percent across the board, the total would be six-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three. If the legislature were to appropriate this amount, it would allow our board to implement the twenty-two percent increase across the board. In addition to attorneys, we have had difficulties filling legal secretarial as well as other administrative support positions. Announcements for our vacancies have been on our website for years, and will only get worse as the pay in the federal government and private sector increases beyond what we can offer our hardworking team members in each of the different Gov Guam departments and agencies. Without funding to pay the twenty-two percent, we could stand to lose far more than five hundred families to Colorado. And on Guam, we, our office would stand to lose our highly-trained staff to other agencies that can pay more. For example, if the Office of the Attorney General receives the funding for the twenty-two percent raise and our office is not provided parity and equal funding, then I can imagine, you know, a mother with children paying daycare would be forced to relocate to the AG's office just to earn a pay that we're hoping that we can provide at our office. So we would ask that the Guam Legislature amend Section Three of Bill Number Twenty-four dash thirty-seven to appropriate the sum of six-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars to the Public Defender Service Corporation for the purpose of paying salary adjustments to the employees of the corporation. Subject to the adjustments, the Board of Trustees of the Public Defender Service Corporation may elect to adopt. I understand that there is a separate bill that has been introduced, you know, to correct the pay disparity with prosecutors. That has not been scheduled for a public hearing yet. I think that providing this full amount would really restore the balance of, to the scales of justice and may make that bill unnecessary. So on behalf of our, our clients, I pray that you approve this bill with our amendment. In closing, I just want to say that a, a rising tide lifts all ships. We have seen the increased tax revenues generated by the PUA payments. The twenty-two percent raise will eventually end up back in our general fund in terms of increased tax collections. This investment in the hardworking employees of the government of Guam will yield increased tax revenues and spur economic development. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide this testimony in support of Bill Number Twenty-four Thirty-seven.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Bautista, sir?
My name is Kenneth Bautista. I'm with the Guam Community College. I'm a systems programmer. I'm here, you know, to ask for this, this legislature to support this bill and to pass this bill or this request from the governor. In 2014, we, we did update, did a pay scale, the DOA did a pay scale, and that was like twenty years. It took twenty years for them to do one and for the government of Guam to decide, okay, we need to, because we're either losing employee, employees with skills and whatnot. So now it's ten years, and we're asking for, they're asking, the governor's put this forth, and we're asking for this legislature to support this bill. Not only because we've all, we're all here, we've all seen the inflation. The gov, the general plan employees have gotten nothing since the beginning of the pandemic. We've seen increases in, in education, law enforcement, nurses, which are all well due to them, but we as government employees who actually support these units and all the other units, we also need to be able to, be able to support ourselves and the rising inflation. I mean, somewhere along the line, bills have been cost of living and, and cost of food, water, power, no one's saying, hey, I would decrease it, I'll decrease it. Nobody's saying that. No, no businesses, all they're doing is increasing, which might be fair because that's what they need to do to bring those products in or for the power or the water to maintain the, their cost, but the government employees are, were assumed to not be able to be, afford the food, the food that we eat. We would have to make adjustments. I mean, I'm making adjustments now in order to figure out whether I should pay for this type of food or, or, or I would, I'm cutting back on paying certain bills, but how long would it be before we can, we can afford to pay our food because we got to pay these bills that are increasing? So I'm asking this legislature to, to please move forward with this appropriation so that the government employees will be able to afford just living. We need living wages. This competence, this act and all this, all this analysis they're doing, they're comparing it to the market average, the, and we're not even getting close to that, but I believe, and I feel that if they pass, we pass this, we could at least start to survive or start to maintain what we were once able to afford. And I'd like, thank you for the legislative, this legislature group for allowing us, allowing me to come here and let, you know, how me as an employee, as part of the general pay plan, has, you know, has been looking at it and has been feeling the crunch, and we don't know when, when, there are, people are saying, when? I mean, this is not the time. When is the time? When we cannot afford our power bills? We cannot afford our mortgage? We cannot afford food? I don't know. When? When is it? I think now's the time. Department of Administration and the governor, they support this, they did their work, and they said that this is doable. So I say, you know, I'm asking this legislative group, I'm asking the whole legislative group to support this bill or to support this action and request and to give us the money that we need to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bautista. Mr. Julian Jensen, sir?
Sorry, thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman San Agustin, Vice Chair Telotidegui, and the rest of the senators here. Thank you very much for holding the hearing on Bill Twenty-four. The testimony I give today is my own, and the views I express are not necessarily reflective of the opinions of any, of my employer or anyone else. I would preface that as a cross-classified merit employee of the government of Guam, a planner three, I am covered by the general pay plan, although I'm not funded locally. But I'm here to argue that salaries paid to all workers of the government of Guam must be at least competitive with the relevant job market. As I stated in a recent letter to the PDN, I believe this pay raise is crucial to ensure that our government is able to function effectively on behalf of the working people of Guam. Every service provided to the working people by their government is ultimately provided by the Gov Guam workers. Underpaying Gov Guam workers is not an option if our working people want high-quality public service. Substandard pay will lead to substandard service. As long as the pay scales remains nine years out of date, we will find that the quality of service of Gov Guam can, that Gov Guam can reasonably demand from its workforce will suffer. Few applicants will beat the door down to compete for wholly inadequate wages. The Department of Administration has researched and demonstrated that salaries under Gov Guam are non-competitive on a national basis. This is supported further by the fact that wages of the U.S. workforce rose thirty-five percent in that time, and even private sector wages on Guam have risen twenty-six percent since the general pay plan was last raised. Even pay pair equity within Gov Guam has suffered with autonomous agency workers, workers in law enforcement, nurses, nurses and medical professionals, teachers, attorneys at the AG's office, each have received a pay raise. I do not oppose those pay raises. Those workers deserve their pay and probably even more. Since the general pay plan, pay plans workers last got a pay raise, the cost of living has risen thirty-five percent, which means the salary levels of the general pay plan has lost about twenty-six percent of their value. The wages and salaries of workers should be at least competitive, and they must offer a good quality of life for all working families. Recently, we've begun to see the continuing, that continuing to pay uncompetitive wages affect the ability of our government and private sector employers to attract and retain a quality workforce. The proposed pay raise for workers of the general pay plan is fully justified by the need for competitive wages to attract and retain Gov Guam workers. Furthermore, this need is underscored by the thirty-five percent rise in the cost of living since the pay scale was last increased. The revenue is there to support this pay raise, so I urge you to pass this bill improving the standards of living for thousands of working families. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Dave De Sola?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman San Agustin and senators for allowing me to provide testimony. I'm here to provide support relative to appropriating the sixteen million dollars. Over the last two years, the department has lost over sixty-three employees. Of the sixty-three employees, fifty-four left due to higher wages, and nine relocated off-island for better opportunities. Of the fifty-four employees- Of the fifty-four employees who left the department for better paying jobs, ten went to private sector, eleven went to autonomous agencies, and six to federal government work, and twenty-seven to other line agencies. According to the department and our mission, it is to foster, promote, and develop the welfare of wage earners of Guam, to improve working and living conditions, and to advance their opportunities for occupational training and profitable employment. And I think sixty-three employees cover that mission pretty well. At the American Job Center, employment development workers work diligently to help unemployed or underemployed individuals find employment or better opportunities. These workers earn a minimum hourly rate of twelve dollars and seventy-five cents an hour, while individuals with the same job and task and responsibilities in Hawaii earn an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars and eight cents. And in Idaho, they earn twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. At Labor's Enforcement Division, labor law enforcement specialists work hard to improve earners' welfare and working conditions. These workers earn a minimum hourly rate of twelve dollars and seventy-five cents an hour, while an individual in the same job with the same task and responsibility in Hawaii earn an hourly rate of twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. And in Idaho, they earn twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Bill twenty four dash thirty seven will take us one step closer to parity amongst other jurisdictions, allow us to recruit and maintain skilled workers, and invest in talent that will increase productivity. Despite these positive benefits, most economists agree that the effect of inflation dramatically undercut the current wages. While Guam is not alone in this regard, the Guam Consumer Price Index measuring inflation has increased by thirty-four point seven percent from two thousand fourteen to twenty twenty-one. So every dollar earned by our employees is worth less and less over time. The announced twenty-two percent increase represents less than a two point three percent annual increase since during the time of two thousand twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-three. This reality results resulted in our inability to retain veteran employees throughout the department, a problem clearly exacerbated by the loss of local personnel to higher paying jobs. My department remains committed to workplace safety, health, and protects all wage earners. It is with hope that you concur that the investment we make in our government employees will yield a greater return for the people of Guam. As the economy grows and improves, so must our government employees. The adjustments in salaries will help us. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill twenty four thirty seven.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Gary?
Yes, good morning. I'm Gary Hiles. I'm speaking here on my own behalf today. I am employed at the Guam Department of Labor as the chief economist, and I'd like to comment on something that no one else in the public discussion has commented on, which is very critical. A number of people have mentioned that the pay scale has, is nine years old, and it hasn't been adjusted since two thousand fourteen. That's true, so that the people that were employed in two thousand fourteen have lost buying power due to inflation. But the problem on the pay scale goes back way before that. When the two thousand fourteen pay scale was enacted, those that were employed previously in the seventies, eighties, nineties were not put on the pay scale, the two thousand fourteen pay scale, at their current step. So if you were an employee who had been employed ten years, you were on whatever letter pay scale at step ten, but then you were not given the step ten on the new pay scale, but rather you were slotted in to the new pay scale, basically at your old pay. So it was a pay raise with no pay increase except for a one step increase, or in some cases, since you're slotted in at one step higher, it would be up to two steps, so anywhere from about a three to seven percent increase for most workers. As a result, the Guam Federation of Teachers, I believe, had a lawsuit to force the, the pay to be at the steps, at the existing steps. That did not succeed, but the net effect was that while we were provided a new pay scale, it was essentially the same pay as the nineteen ninety-one pay scale. So I pulled out the nineteen ninety-one pay scale, and I realized that basically I'm still on the nineteen ninety-one pay scale, but only several steps above where we would have been without the two thousand fourteen. It did accelerate, the moving to the new pay scale did add a step or two, and it accelerated the movement among the steps because if you were employed at step ten, you would get a pay raise every two years, the annual increment or the increment. But if you were moved back down to step one, then you would get it every year. So the frequency of the increments increased, but the net effect was it was a movement, more of a movement to the, the two thousand fourteen pay scale rather than a movement to the two thousand fourteen pay for that pay level. So there's, there's been a, the, and looking at the inflation over that time period, consumer prices have increased over a hundred percent, so that the buying power of somebody that was employed in the nineties is approximately half of what it would have been due to inflation if we remained on the old pay scale without inflation. So we have difficulty recruiting employees as well as retaining them, and this pay increase will help address two problems in the economy. Limited demand, increased resident expenditures will provide more buying power in the community and support local businesses, as well as help address one of Guam's concerns going forward and re recovering from the pandemic is maintaining the workforce necessary for the economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Teresa?
Good morning, senators. My name is Teresa Ariola, the Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank the good senator, the chairman of the committee, and all you senators who are here today, and all senators who have, one way or another, shared with me their support. I want to be very clear, I do not stand here alone. With me today, and probably left already the halls because there's work to be done, are my immediate managers, and if you would indulge me, I would like to say their names because they wanted me to say their names and wanted to be sure that their employees under them were clear that they fully support this bill. To be clear, Bill twenty four dash thirty, thirty seven at the request of Governor Lulion Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio, through the hard work of Department of Administration, Guam Behavioral Health absolutely hundred percent supports this increase, of course. We are a health and human service department, so of course, we're going to support our, our human service getting a living wage. Senators, with me, as I stated, are the following managers who represent a total of two hundred and ninety-three employees and at an average of two or three family members, over a thousand people impacted by their pay today and would be impacted if they got their pay or if they didn't get their pay that this bill requests. Today with me is Ms. Rena Sanchez, an administrator who has been, a clinical administrator who has been with the department for over twenty years, probably longer than that, but during the time when department, when the department was still at the old Guam Memorial Hospital at Oka Point. She represents just highlighting the few big divisions, the counseling division and the social work division. Along with her, with me today is Dr. James Cooper Nurse. He is the administrator of the Children and Adolescent Service Division. Ms. Lenny Urbano, our nursing administrator, is here today. Ms. Debbie Paulino, representing our physical team. Ms. Maile Samson and Chris Duñez, representing our HR team. Ms. Luisa Tenorio, who is our CARF officer and is getting us ready for our CARF reaccreditation this year, she is here today. Ms. Marissa Uggan, representing Healing Hearts, she, our only rape and crisis center. Ms. Michelle Santos, our training officer, is here today, representing the Training Division. Mr. Charles Pangolinen, representing the men and women of the Facilities and Maintenance Division. Ms. Marilyn Afrigui, representing our, our Patient Affairs and Billing Division. Ms. Shermelin Panetta, representing our residential program. As you know, Guam Behavioral Health has several, several homes. Mr. Victor Luhon, representing the Compliance Office of Drug and Alcohol Compliance. Mr. Barson Eldeman, representing our medical, med records supervisor, he is our med records supervisor and representing the, the good working men and women in the med records area. Dr. Mary Fergiger was here this morning. She is our lead psychologist. And last but not least, Ms. Athena Duñez and Anne Marie Pangolinen, who represent our Drug and Alcohol Division. Senators, good senators, I stand before you, two hundred and ninety-three employees strong. I mention the managers that are with me who represent their line staff. We are here as the Department of, of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, a health and human service department. Understandably, naturally, the Guam Behavioral Health is probably one of those agencies, along with my other health and human service department, who is very staff-heavy when you look at the, the staffing pattern. Why? Because that's our business. Our work is to help people, and so we need people to help people. We are a human service department, so our staffing pattern is top-heavy, without a doubt. I am so pleased that my nursing division and my law enforcement safety positions were taken care of last year by the governor and the lieutenant governor, and they rightfully deserve those pay as well as those who were in the past legislature and voted for that and supported that, so I thank you. Recruitment and retention is so critical in my department. I cannot tell you, weekly, I get resignations of critical positions such as counseling and social workers because the pay is just greater overseas or in the mainland. My colleague, David Delasola, mentioned and did some comparisons. I today am here providing oral testimony, but in my written testimony that you will receive shortly, you will see those comparisons of those key positions compared to Honolulu, California, and the Midwest. I won't even touch East Coast because the cost of living, living there is just tremendous. Recruitment and retention is so important. I can't even begin to tell you, we've done everything. We have worked hard with the Department of Administration to continuously open certain positions for open recruitment, like counseling, social workers, psych techs. They are today, if you go into the DOA website, they're in continuous recruitment, but it's difficult to get an available list because the pay is just not, is not there. We are seeing people with high numbers of years of experience, and training is so difficult. Being a CARF accredited department, the training is key. We need to train our people, and so keeping their, keeping them at the department is key. Every time we train folks, they leave because of greater opportunities. These positions I mentioned again are in continuous recruitment, and we continue to find difficulty in recruiting these key positions in a behavioral health and mental health, drug addiction department that is addressing our brothers and sisters who, who need our help. The cost of living, mentioned by many people before me, has just increased, is increasing. I'm sure you folks who sit before me all feel it. Not only is the cost of living that those who are lucky enough to get the pay adjustment, the teachers, the law enforcement folks, and the nurses, the, the cost of living on Guam doesn't just affect them, it affects everyone across the board. I wholeheartedly support this bill. You will be receiving my written testimony. I beg you on behalf of the two hundred and ninety-three employees and their families that will be impacted to please vote for a living wage. Our island and our people deserve it. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Ariola. Alice Tyrone, ma'am?
Thank you. Hoffeine and good morning, Chairman Justin Augustine and members of the Thirty-seventh Guam Legislature. My name is Alice Tyrone. I am here today as the administrative director of the Chamorah Land Trust Commission, speaking in support of Bill twenty four thirty seven, an act to appropriate sixteen million dollars to the Department of Administration for the implementation of the adjusted general pay plan. I respectfully ask this legislative body to stand in support of our government workers who are tasked to carry out the many mandates placed upon their respective agencies and pass this bill. The Chamorah Land Trust oversees approximately a third of Guam's land. Our team is mandated to get these properties leased for residential, agricultural, and, and/or commercial purposes while also protecting our environment and ensuring that individuals on these properties comply with lease agreements and applicable laws. To that end, I currently have a team of eight tasked to work towards accomplishing these mandates and our mission. I am faced with the challenge of having to retain and recruit individuals to come and work for the CLTC. The current pay plan is a hindrance to attracting good talent and retaining good employees. Passing Bill twenty four thirty seven will help CLTC attract and retain qualified individuals and employees, thus preventing a loss of human resource to the federal government and/or the private sector. That being said, and although not in my written testimony, I respectfully ask this body, as they deliberate, not to pit us against family and friends in the private sector. The private sector has their own processes by which they can increase their pay for their employees. This is an issue about the need to attract and retain public servants so they may carry out public mandates and continue to serve the public. Senators, our government employees Senators, our government employees are our public servants. They serve the public every day to the best of their ability. Even in the face of numerous mandates and a lack of resources, they serve. Their just days' work deserves a just day's wage. Pass Bill 2437, it is the right time and the right and just thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyron. Ms. Lastimosa, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and Honorable Senators. My name is Michelle Lastimosa. I'm the deputy administrator for Guam IP. The administrator sends his apologies, he wanted to be here, but he's currently with our federal counterparts at our Circlev Brownfield site in Dedido. The Guam Environmental Protection Agency is in full support of Bill 2437. It has been echoed in this very room that Guam IP has the same, if not less, number of employees it had thirty, I'm sorry, three decades ago. As our population grows, so too are the laws to protect the environment, laws we struggle to enforce, despite having a good environmental framework capable of effectively enforcing laws and regulations. We are simply spread too thin. Guam IP continues to be short-staffed, only compounded by an aging workforce, impending retirements, and younger staff being lured to private companies and the DoD for higher pay. Our ability to maintain a strong salary structure is more imperative now than ever. If our salary structure is not in sync with the current labor market, we will continue to have difficulty attracting and retaining talent. Bill 2437 is a step forward maintaining a competitive salary structure. Bill 2437 aims to address the pay disparity before they become so large that we lose altogether our ability to attract and retain talent. Moreover, salary structure issues are less expensive when addressed early on. Once recruiting and retention have gotten to the point where no one is applying, and we must make significant upward adjustments, the cost of doing so can be considerable. It's no secret that as frontline managers, we hear from our employees, who know they can earn more elsewhere, before these individuals actually leave us. We continue to fall short in matching the salaries offered by the private companies and the DoD. For example, an engineer one or environmental health specialist starts at thirty-seven-thousand-one-hundred dollars in the GovGuam structure, whereas in the private sector, it may start at fifty-thousand, and with DoD, over ninety-thousand, including COLA and locality pay. That's a difference of twenty-five to forty percent increase. If we continue to keep the salary structure out of alignment with the current job market, we lose our ability to compete, and we will lose our most valuable resource, our staff and their talents. Bill 2437 will provide a framework based on competitive positioning in the market and other factors, including local and regional economic conditions. With the ongoing military buildup and other construction around the island, environmental compliance and enforcement is paramount to prevent and control environmental damage and safeguard public health. Our staff are doing much more than what is in their job description, which is often the reason they become so marketable, poachable even, in this industry, already competing for talented professionals in high demand. The twenty-two percent increase will greatly affect the impact to attract and keep our employees. Dankolino Sijusmaasi for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lastimosa. Speaker, Senator, or Superintendent Wampat, ma'am.
Honorable Senator Augustine and honorable members of the Guam Legislature, Buenas en Hoffe day. I am Dr. Judith Wampat, Acting Superintendent of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 24-37, an act to appropriate sixteen million dollars to the Department of Administration for implementation of the adjusted general pay plan, an act which the Guam Department of Education fully supports. In the last two fiscal years, GDOE saw adjustments to the pay of both its nurses and educators, bringing wages closer to the national averages. Now, GDOE's hard-working employees, not included on either educator or nurse pay plans, could potentially see the similar increase for the first time since the implementation of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. As you know, this is my third week on the job, and I have focused much of my school facilities and capital improvement projects to ensure that we are on the road to repair and upgrade our aging facilities, a focus that I think we can all agree is much needed at this time. To support this effort, I have, as I've noted, I have directed my management team and their staff to review all American Rescue Plan, AARP budget allocations and expenditures, and to prioritize the funding for facilities and capital improvement projects, federal funding sources such as Education Stabilization Fund, ESF, or consolidated grant, or decrease their allocation under AARP. In recognizing these efforts, I believe that we are now able to turn some of our government's resources to supporting our personnel. In GDOE, we have already seen the increase for teachers and school administrators. We believe that it's now time for our other professional administrative and support staff. GDOE needs to offer competitive wages to recruit and retain these personnel. In many instances, we have already fallen behind as compared to other government agencies, and often ask our hard-working, non-teaching staff to perform additional duties above their job descriptions. GDOE has and continues to face challenges in the recruitment and retention of employees for critical positions due to low wages. This lack of competitive pay results in higher turnover in these positions. This turnover then leads to staff shortages, shortages which require current employees to go above and beyond their normal work duties to compensate for the gaps in staffing. Unfortunately, we have seen many of our hard-working professionals leave for higher-paying jobs, not only in the private sector, but also in the autonomous agencies. We believe that the enactment of this pay raise will address many of these concerns. And to give you a little example, DOE has announced to recruit PC four and PC three positions for the capital improvement projects, but to date, we have not received any applicants. We are having difficulty filling positions such as for carpenters, plumbers, and electricians. We have twenty-five positions to fill under Facilities and Maintenance, and so far, we were only able to hire helpers. Additionally, our facilities and maintenance staff will be, will be difficult for them to work without the tools that they would need, which is maintaining our schools. So without these resources, it will be futile. With that said, though the GDOE supports the enactment of Bill 24-37, the department also recognizes the impact such an act will have on its current operational budget. DOE estimates that twenty-two percent adjustment to seven-hundred-and-twenty-five general pay plan positions will result in a seven-million-fifty-hundred-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-six-dollar increase to personnel costs, which will require additional funding to sustain. If passed into law, the increase will amend our previous FY 2024 GDOE budget request submission, from two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars to two-hundred-and-ninety-four-million-five-hundred-and-six-thousand, hundred-thousand-sixty dollars. In order to implement Bill 24-37 successfully, DOE will need its full appropriation to ensure we sustain our baseline operations and provide full funding for all critical contracts. The department is hopeful that the Thirty-Seventh Guam Legislature will provide its full support in appropriating GDOE a sufficient budget to cover this pay adjustment while also fully funding all GDOE operations. This includes the possibility of a supplemental appropriation of twenty-two million for fiscal year twenty-three to avoid the use of AARP funds for any further operational expenses. At this time, twenty-two million in AARP funding is allocated to support utilities payments that cannot be addressed through the local appropriation due to a shortfall of FY twenty-three funding. If additional local funds are not provided, this twenty-two million will be taken from the hundred-and-thirty-three-plus-million dollars that was identified and reallocated for Facilities and CIP. I would like to thank you, on behalf of the department, for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 24-37, and we are hopeful for its passage. I look forward to continued partnership with the Thirty-Seventh Guam Legislature in building up our island's public education. Sijusmaasi.
Thank you, Superintendent. We now begin questions. Senator Telo?
Thank you, Ms.
Do you have any questions? We still have another panel after this.
Yeah, okay, so two questions.
There's two questions again, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know it's going to be a long one, so, today. Again, thank you so much for testifying, everyone who's here. Even if you're not getting a raise, you know, you're here to advocate for those who desperately need it, and especially when you're in a position to see the hard work that they do. You know, I always truly believe in awarding individuals who do a great job, and I'm hoping that you'll, you know, if this goes through, that this increase is not done just because, it's done because it's deserved, it's definitely needed. Inflation has brought you to that point, but also to, to do a good job. You know, I'm hearing some comments that are being sent to me via text regarding, you know, individuals in the government of Guam getting a raise, but yet, the service still, still is bad, you know? So I just hope that administrators who are here today, you know, provide, provide the services that the people of Guam expect, you know, especially if they get a raise. I mean, the private sector, I'm surprised they're not here to say anything about this. However, my concern is to be able to ensure that whatever funding that we put forward to address salary increases, it's going to be sustainable. Right now, we're hearing that the population on Guam has declined considerably, and that's our tax base. The, you know, the issues with our infrastructure for our schools, as other issues come about that need immediate attention because of the safety and welfare of our public, those are running into the tens of millions of dollars. I just don't want to see us, a year from now or two years from now, having to let people go because we can't afford to pay their salaries. So who's here today advocating for salaries may lose their job in two years from now if the government of Guam can't sustain that increase. Gary, you know, I always rely on you when it comes to, you know, projected revenues coming into the government of Guam. And every year, there's about a ten percent increase that's given based on just natural economic growth. Is that right? Is it about ten percent, if I'm not mistaken? And with that amount, because of the population going from one-seventy to about one-fifty-five, is there going to be a substantial change in the tax base that's going to come, that we're going to see in revenue, when it comes to withholding and tax income?
I've looked forward several years, and the outlook for the next several years is that Guam's economy will expand very significantly for two reasons. Number one, the military buildup is on like a mountain, and we're approaching the peak of the expansion, and that will continue for several years until the project is done. Also, tourism is about thirty percent of its prior pre-pandemic levels, and the outlook, after all disasters, has been that tourism will, has been, and will continue to recover. How much is uncertain, but it's almost certain that it will recover additional amounts substantially. And so, those two drivers together, the economy and the revenues are virtually assured to go up over the next several years.
Well, including even if there's a decline, a huge decline in population on Guam? So that's not going to have any effect on the tax base?
There appears to be, well, based on the last two censuses from 2010 to 2020, the decline was a little over two percent. So I'm not sure how, we only have anecdotal information on the recent decline of migration, we don't have solid numbers. But, but based on the housing shortages, it doesn't appear that there's a mass, there's substantial migration outward, but not so much that there's vacant housing and so on.
So ten percent, I asked you about the ten percent of escalation, you know, as far as like...
I don't have a specific number offhand. I would defer to the Budget Department on the revenue forecast.
On the forecast, on increase, on any amount, okay. And, and the last question I had with regards to, what amount is anticipated in return of the forty-one million that's anticipated for FY twenty-four will yield in income tax and withdrawal tax? Do you know that amount offhand?
No, but in, in looking at the total tax collections compared to total wages in the economy, it looks like about ten percent of the wages come back.
Ten percent of forty-one? Okay, thank you.
In terms of additional revenue. It may be more than that as well, because as the, there's additional wages that would be at a higher tax bracket on the marginal rates.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Senator Tytegui. Senator Tom, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank all the panel members. I was really interested in Ms. Ariola, what you said. I mean, you're one person here, but you're standing in front of a thousand, right? I mean, you're standing, all your employees and their families are all impacted by our decision, which has come out.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that, and that is certainly not unique for your agency. Everybody...
I'm sure it's across the board of the government of Guam.
It's absolutely across the board, I feel. I sympathize very much with GovGuam workers, I sympathize with these people who are trying to, you know, keep their family together and their house together, and take care of grandparents, and take care of children, et cetera, and every obligation possible, and they're not making that much. And I very much sympathize, I hope we can pay for it, the twenty, and I'm sure you agree, that I hope we could pay for an increase like that, and perhaps for even other GovGuam agencies. I'd also like to compliment, excuse me, I'd like to compliment Senator Tytegui. I thought her observations on the sustainability of this increase were very much right on. You know, it's good, it's good if we can pay for it for the first two years, but can we pay for it after that? And I thank her for bringing that up. Mr. Chair, I really don't have any further questions, but I do have to note that on this extremely serious issue for people across the island, north to south, east to west, people who are at their desks right now, and people who are patrolling our streets right now, it's, I want to express to... now, it's, I want to express to the government of Guam how seriously we take the requests. And, you know, all of us were younger once, and we all struggled, we know. That being the case, I would note that 100% of the Republican Caucus is here to listen to this need, and 33% of the Democratic Caucus is here. I would like to thank Senator Brown, Senator Taitegui, Senator San Augustine, Senator Shelton, who stepped out, Senator Canata, Senator Duennius, Senator Luhon, and Senator Blas for taking the needs of the people of Guam seriously. Next time we do this, I hope that we see significantly more of our colleagues here to listen to those important, important concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Duennius, do you have your two questions for the panel?
Sijus Massey, Mr. Chairman, I have many more, but the two will suffice. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, it is in the spirit of my hope that Bill 32-37 would have been on today too, because as my great uncle, which I've many times said on the floor, would demonstrate, now we're cooking with gas. Because my point is to go to Speaker Wampat first, and I'm glad you included this in your testimony. If you read the summation of Speaker Wampat and her discussions on Department of Education, Mr. Chair, and maybe we won't have to use 32-37, maybe if we do it right and go ahead and increase revenues, we'll talk to Mr. Byrne when he comes back to the table on that, we can go ahead and do what the request here, unwriting from the Superintendent of Education, is. A supplemental appropriation of $22 million to make sure that we make whole the ARP funds intended for our students, their welfare, their health, and the upkeeping and proper operation of our schools to support their education. And, Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, fits kind of nicely, is almost seven, in excess of $7 million for them to sustain this going forward, which rounds close to $30 million. So, Madam Superintendent, I'm glad that you put this in here. I'd just like to make sure that we understand, because your representation has been with your fiscal team, that you have close to $80 million that you're working on to possibly reallocate and shortfalls. So this, restoring this $22 million and making sure that you don't have to use that for operational needs will support everything you need to do taking care of the schools. Would that be your testimony?
Yes, and I might just add that $22 million really is for utilities.
Correct. And so basically, and then what, just, this is a follow-on for the question, basically what we're talking about here is we have underfunded the Department of Education severely to the point to where they relied on ARP funds in order to be able to carry out their operations. This is some of the back and forth that some individuals have been attacking personally myself for not being in support of raises. That is not the truth. The truth is, we are one government, and we have operational needs for everybody. And to invest in our people means to invest in our children and be true to the fact that we fully fund education. That's investing in all of our people, as is put forward. My second question, because I appreciate your testimony from the Land Management Agency. My question is simply, and we'll debate this on the floor when we debate the budget. We talk about the investment in our people, we talk about the investment in the government of Guam budget annually. The perennial shortfall is always in operations. It's always to be able to buy what you need, the tools to do your job. When we debate this budget, this fiscal year, I guarantee you that in excess of 93% of all requests will be budgets and salaries, with barely anything left to pay your bills, to purchase automobiles, to purchase tools, to do the things that are the same service to the people of Guam. So Ms. Tyron, I just, I want to address your statement, because no one here is trying to pit government workers against private workers. A private industry and a private business has to invest in its infrastructure and its capability and its tools required to do its job in order to survive. No business will work without tools and only people. So I just wanted to ask, since you've been now a part of the government for several years, seeing too the operations now of the Jamar Land Trust Commission, as well as being front and center in the governor's office, do you share the fact that we have had a perennial lack of funds for operational issues within the government outside of salaries and benefits?
I believe that's going to vary among the agencies, with the agencies. And if there is a shortfall...
I just addressed it to you specifically, simply because what you had brought to the attention wholeheartedly was the investment in our people, which I wholeheartedly agree with. But since there's a juxtaposition of pitting individuals against each other, I asked it directly to you, because the people of Guam out there who need the services from the government, need the government to have the tools to operate and not just the personnel. So I wanted you to share, I wanted you to share your thoughts.
Sorry, Senator, so you're asking if there is a perennial problem with funding for anything outside of operations, personnel?
Anything outside of personnel?
Out of personnel.
Is there a perennial shortfall in operations in all the agencies you've reviewed? Where are you at now? Do you need vehicles? Do you need tools? Do you need survey equipment? Do you need things to operate?
Well, as far as the Jamar Land Trust Commission is concerned, there is a shortage. I've been on the job for about five weeks, four weeks, I think it is. There is a shortage for anything outside of, we do need new vehicles, we need more people to conduct public mandates. So yes, there's a shortage.
And that's a simple point I want to make, that we are working here to try to find out how we find a budget and a balance to serve all. I understand your advocacy. We're going to debate this advocacy very vigorously on the floor. We're going to debate it, hopefully, in the context of a budget scenario, so that we understand the competing interests across the government, so that when we come to a final decision, we'll make that decision properly with information that is based on all the taxpayers of Guam and their contributions to what makes our island work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Jesse, you have your two questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hailes, as the chief economist for the governor of Guam, you said that the Guam's, our island's fiscal outlook for the next few years is pretty substantial. What do you project, how many years out do you project that substantial fiscal viability to be? And the follow-up question to that is, what do you project the percentage of the physical viability of that to increase on an annual basis?
I have officially projected for the 2014 budget. And looking at the military buildup plans, several years beyond that, there'll be substantial increases in activity. And based on the historical trend and tourism recovery from disasters, it's, and the tourism bureaus forecast that there'll be additional recovery that will carry on through the future. In addition to the economic growth, another factor that will continue and maintain higher levels of revenue is the unfortunate inflation, because when the dollars, prices of things go up, even if the stores are selling the same things, the dollars of revenue will also go up to the government of Guam. So that is almost certain to continue, because while inflation may slow down in the rate of growth that's expected, the absolute level of prices are likely to be maintained at a higher level indefinitely.
Well, that rate of growth anyway will also be, actually be hindered by the, I guess, inflationary prices and the, when we look at our tourism market with its growth and that, again, in, for example, Juman, whose yen is a lot weaker than the US dollar, we don't know when that will recover. And likewise, again, when we look at the saber rattling that China is having with Taiwan, and we don't know, again, if that industry will have a significant, I mean, we're hoping and praying it will, but we don't know if that industry will have a significant rebound based on that, those two alone.
I, we don't know how fully it will rebound, but I think the Japan arrivals are just starting to increase because of the reduction in the COVID pandemic restrictions. So I think they're virtually as certain to double or triple from where they are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Blas, or, excuse me, Senator Brown, do you have any questions? Your two questions, ma'am?
You're just syncing with the letter B, Mr. Chair, that's why. You know, I appreciate the testimony by our acting superintendent, and I think it brings to light an issue that I have concern with, I think, as we all do, and certainly you've been on our side of the aisle as we've been on yours in running department and agencies of ensuring that we can pay for obligations, because salaries are a portion of, in most Gov Guam agencies, it's the largest portion of what is paid. And you bring to light right now, and looking at the ARP funding, that your power bill for Department of Education's being subsidized in the amount of $22 million. Well, we know those funds are going to disappear soon. How do you intend, I mean, I know it's not long-term, we'll be surprised, I'm not going to be surprised, I still see you here a year from now, and we're having this conversation. How is the department going to absorb that? Because you also know that there's limits to the amount of revenue that's generated. Right now, we're, you know, we're receiving benefits from the pandemic, we're receiving benefits from the military buildup, as mentioned, it's increasing, we're leveling off, and then, as they say, all that rises will fall. How are you going to address that in your management? What are your priorities going to be? Because we were concerned, and I know Senator Blas had brought this up last year around mid-part of the year when we were looking at the governor's proposal of these pay increases for DOE. Nobody argues the pay increase, the need, and the competitiveness of the market that we're in for certain critical positions. But the federal money that was allocated for the maintenance of facilities and the improvement of facilities that we are hearing regularly are degradating out there in our school system, from fleas to infestation of rats to mold that our children are being exposed to, that that money was spent on pay raises versus addressing those other critical needs in the schools. And I know you, having been an educator for many years from the bottom up, recognize the importance of that. So imagine to our community, while we certainly want to be supportive of raises, how are you going to balance that priority, considering it's a substantial amount of your budget? And you also told us not too long ago that the Department of Education is educating about 10,000, if I'm correct, if I recall in my memory, less children today than you were a number of years ago. So you're educating less children, the cost is rising, $22 million now is being subsidized by the ARP funding that's going to disappear, and you're going to come back to ask for additional subsidy. So how does all that add up? And in the end of the day, and then again, also just the long term, if we can do it for the next two, three, four years, I mean, before we left the added, I mean, the, sorry, I've been in two administrations, the Calvo Tenori administration, we were aware of the military buildup and the benefits Guam is going to receive to our tax base. But we also know that that's maybe about a 10-year period. We're now five years in, another five to six years. And I want to make sure when we make decisions, they're responsible and they can be sustained, because I don't want to say, today I give you, elect me tomorrow, then you're, then I'm going to come back and say we don't. And we've, Senator, we've served many years in this legislature, we've had declining revenue, have had to cut, including salaries, including positions, and that's a concern that we would have in the, right now, looking at the overall picture. So how are you going to absorb that with the Department of Education if you continue in your position long-term in the next year? How do you absorb that with other obligations?
Three weeks into the job, you're right. And I'm going to be here...
You have the resume, you can handle it.
And I'm going to be here for five months. However, I have actually thought about, you know, where we'd be going after five months. It's unfortunate that December 2024 ARP will, will no longer then be available for DOE to use.
Like Cinderella's pumpkin, right?
So we've looked at several options here. One is to do a public-private partnership for the maintenance of all of our other school facilities, and then, and primarily because we're having a very difficult time actually recruiting key facilities and maintenance workers such as carpenters, electricians, plumbers, and the sort. And there may be then a smaller group to look at in terms of what, you know, they can do at the facility primarily if the contract should go out. We need to do an assessment, which we haven't done yet, because we still don't know whether we're going to be at full capacity with facilities and maintenance, to do a cost analysis of maintaining a full force versus actually outsourcing those, very similar to what we've done with feeding, child nutrition program, where we outsourced it to a private sector. And the same with ground maintenance and, and what's the other one? I forgot. But anyway, that's what we're looking at. We still honestly, I can't tell you, because we don't know yet, we are still recruiting, because what we're using are, those employees would be to address the smaller maintenance problems that we could do by providing them the tools and the supplies that they need. But ultimately, when it does go out, very similar to what we're doing with our leased schools, we're hoping that the cost analysis would be a lot less than what we're currently operating with. So I, it's hard to predict in the future, because it just depends on, one, whether we're going to get the full funding from the legislature. There's definitely no way that we can continue without paying the $22 million for utilities. And if I'm going to use ARP monies now, that's $22 million less that would actually go out to the schools. And I want to make sure that we pay this, because GPA has been a very good partner with us, with their engineers, and in terms of providing the scope of work that we need for all of the facilities, and trying to see all of the requisitions and the ARP's that are going to go out for these schools by May. And so they're helping us, and I want to help them in return as well by fulfilling our obligation to pay that $22 million.
Well, I appreciate your being upfront, because not every director has, and I'm still having, looking here at the ARP funding, on what other positions that Governor Guam are funded and are subsidized by ARP funding that's going to disappear on top of other expenditures. Because I don't believe, even though this legislature mandated by law that we provide a breakdown of the expenditures, all we're getting is maybe salaries, benefits, contracts, that's all we're seeing. We really don't know, nor does the people of Guam know how these monies have been spent, what they've been subsidized, are there additional obligations the government will inherit that we have to pay beyond that? Because you're just providing us a big-ticket item, certainly for DOE, with $22 million. I don't know where else and what else is going to come up at the end of next year. So in all fairness, Mr. Chair, I think it's going to be critical, because I don't know what more you can do, is put the language, you know, the Fino English in law, and still not have the breakdown of knowing how ARP money, how millions and millions and millions of dollars of federal money intended on behalf of our people are being paid. It's very difficult, and that's why I've never supported either budget over the last two years, because I think it's very difficult to support something when you don't know how large amounts of public money is being spent. So I do want to bring that to light, because I think that adds another critical element in making a decision. I mean, I would love to always, I think everybody would love to have a pay raise. Who's going to argue against it? The question is, can we afford it? Can we sustain it? And more importantly, are we taking care of other critical needs, including public safety, that our people right now will... of other critical needs, including public safety, that our people right now will tell you or at the top of -- certainly will tell us, tell us all the time, are their top priorities? So those, obviously, as you know, Madam Speaker, Senator, you know, all the titles that you have, Judy Wampat, will have to take into consideration. But thank you very much. I appreciate you being upfront about this. I think it's important that we know all this information. With that, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, I have no other questions or comments on this with this panel. Thank you.
Senator Blas, you have any -- you have your two questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and thank you again to the panel. Speaker, I thank you for the letter. I'm going to go ahead and ask a little bit, a few more questions with regard to your -- first off, you provide that you're going to need about $7,500, $896 increase to cover the general pay plan for 725 employees within GDU. Is that to cover for the remainder of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, because along those lines, ma'am, when you say then that it will affect and it will increase your 2024 budget from $287,361,000 to $294,506, that's only an increase of $7,144,345. So if you need $7 million to cover the rest of this fiscal year, there's a $7 million that you're requesting an increase in your 2024 fiscal year, will that sufficiently cover it?
Well, according to my finance deputy, that this is the figure that he had estimated for the 725. If we don't get that separate funding alone, then we want to add it on as either the request as a supplemental, or third is that we would actually put it in the new budget, I mean, the 2024 budget that we've submitted, to go in and make the adjustment.
Okay, well, because, you know, when you need $7,500 to -- for the end of this fiscal year, which is six months, but then you only request for an additional $7.1 million for all of next fiscal year for the same amount of employees, I'm a little confused there. Can you have that checked?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Secondly, and you brought up an interesting thing, and I, you know, like Senator Brown says, I want to say I told you so, but you're also requesting for a supplemental of about $22 million. Because unless you get that, you're going to have to take it from the $130 million you have left, you know, in ARP fund for facilities and CIP. Do you recall, or do you happen to remember what that figure was, that they took ARP monies to do the Pichu pay raise?
No, I don't have that.
About $22 million. Okay? So, you know, when we said that we were going to save it, and it's not going to impact us, then we come back in a different administration. I appreciate, you know, the candor. And, ma'am, I've always known you're not going to hold back on anything, and I appreciate that, okay? And I'm getting here is, we said this. We said this was going to happen, and you -- and the administration said, no, it wasn't going to happen. And now it's happening. $22 million. And this bill is asking for 16. So if there's anybody going to be pitting anybody, it's the Gov Guam employees versus the students, and we're not the ones doing it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Canata, do you have your questions, your two questions?
Going in past, there's other panelists I think that need to be heard more importantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, panel, for being here, your excuse. The next group, please line up on the chairs, so that you'll be able to testify accordingly. We'll start out with Charlene San Nicholas, then Bertha Tyrone, Paul David Cabana, Dan Weiss, R. Alexander. Please, please have a seat where I called your name, okay? First one was Charlene San Nicholas. Charlene is the first one on that, on that, okay? And then the next one would be Bertha Tyrone, Bertha Tyrone, and then Paul David Cabana. You'd be the next -- okay, you're good. Okay, and then we got Dan Weiss, R. Alexander, Melvin Wampat, Roy Gamboa, Chelsea Munya, Lilani Navarro, Chris Flores, and Tammy Amoan. Joe. Joe Meskin? And was you going to take a few-minute recess while they get all set? And some of my colleagues have to take a short break.